Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krap.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Announcements, acknowledgements?
Motion to excuse Mayor Dempsey.
Motion to excuse Mayor Dempsey and Commissioner Button.
So moved.
Support.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krap.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes. Okay, now for announcements, acknowledgements, and communications and reports, including quarterly department reports.
We're going to start our quarterly department reports with the Community Development Department, Brian Tingley.
Good evening. In the third quarter of this year, there were 376 building and other trade permits issued, 588 code enforcement cases opened, 289 rental inspections and vacant property verifications conducted, 93 rental certificates of compliance issued, and six new certificates of occupancy issued. This quarter, department staff attended meetings of the Downtown Development Authority Historical Commission, Harbor Commission, Art Space Steering Committee, and the Planning Commission. And in September, the Planning Commission approved a new 12,000-square-foot retail building at 50 North Grossbeck, where the diner was recently demolished over the summer. That's everything tonight.
Any questions? Thank you. Next we'll have our Finance Department Director Cliff Mason.
I don't know if I can be Brian's 30 seconds, that's hard to do. That might be a record. But for a numbers guy, I don't get into numbers too often. What I like to do is tell you what we're trying to accomplish to make things more efficient, utilize our staff in better means, and what we're going to do to make the city more viable, and maybe give suggestions how we can enable to do certain things that we've looked at and maybe not been able to do, but will look at things in order to gain more money. Now, just recently, last time I talked here, we put a tax system in place. I'd like to see what the result is. Tax system is working perfectly. Lori Holland, who is my deputy, he never done tax billing. We did the tax billing for the summer months without glitch. We put out 22, I'm giving you round figures here, put out $22 million in tax bills. We've collected 87 percent, or 18 million of it. That's how we run our city, and we also collect, you know, for other communities. But a bulk of our revenue comes in off tax. But the most important thing is, we're balanced right to the penny in everything we've done. Now, we're getting ready to do the December tax billing, and we're working with the county right now in order, we do unfortunately have quite a few delinquent properties that would be going for foreclosure in March. But I'm working with our Assessing Department, Ms. Holland, we're identifying all those properties with the county, and we will put reminders on the tax bills for those people who have delinquent property with the county to ensure that they know prior to getting a notice from the county. All right, so that's on the tax side. To our cash side, we're just working out, putting a new cash system in place that is working phenomenal. Now, we got our bank statements down to 13 days instead of 13 months, and, which is really good. And in working with Plant Moran, they came in today, our main auditors. We get done with the audit, that's when we'll get up and we'll talk numbers. They're starting, we'll be done in three weeks. We'll have a presentation for council before the holidays, and I'm just going to give you a little bit of optimism. I think we're going to, not we, but the city is going to show itself that had very, on the financial side, a very good year. So with that, you know what, the audit will be done, and we'll have a meeting with Mayor Council. I'm going to try hopefully to have it by the second meeting in December.
Thank you. Next we'll have Human Resources Director Sarah Price.
Good evening. The City of Mount Clemens ended the third quarter with 68 total employees, 58 full-time and 10 part-time. In the last three months, we have successfully onboarded a new full-time mechanic in the Public Services Department and two part-time bus drivers. We've processed six bi-weekly payrolls, three retiree payrolls, and six miscellaneous payrolls. We've had the job opening posted for the City Manager position. If you are interested in any positions that we would have available at the city, you can visit our website at www.cityofmountclemens.com and click on the link for job opportunities. I've worked with the Clerk's Office and the Finance Department in order to provide information relating to our annual actuary report and audit preparation, as Cliff mentioned. We've updated the computer system and prepared information for a workers' comp audit and EEO4 survey. I've also completed mandatory monthly and quarterly reports. In addition, I've assisted the Mayor's Office with the State of the City presentation, and then just kind of the general items, employment verifications, wage surveys and such, and any general questions that employees or retirees raised have been taken care of. And lastly, the Clementine Newsletter was created and distributed to all Mount Clemens residents the first week of October. And I have extra editions of the newsletter here at City Hall. We also have it available on our website. Do you have any questions?
Did we distribute the Clementine to the senior towers again? Because they aren't getting the journal newspaper still.
I believe the mayor had taken over stacks of the newsletters, some of the extras. Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Next we'll have from the Utilities Department, we'll start with wastewater treatment plant Jay Pick. Supervisor Jay Pick.
Thank you. The City of Mount Clemens wastewater treatment plant cleaned 417 million gallons of wastewater over this quarter. Our staff completed confined space and OSHA training during the period. The water insurer crew completed 34 curb stop repairs and responded to 240 customer service requests. AC/DC Electric repaired our base and generator transfer switch, allowing us to safely switch to generator power at our retention base and should the power go out. And Lenny and I have been working on our meter replacement program, replacing the oldest meters in the city. We started about 200 meters about a year ago. We're down to the last 15. So we should have that wrapped up by the end of the year. That's about all I got.
Do you have any questions?
I have one. Jay, is all of the, is everything done with respect to what we were trying to accomplish when we went through that, where it affected the water taste and people were so concerned about the water quality?
That's all right.
Hey, Lenny, you already know what my question is.
You want to give your report first for the water filtration plant, Lenny Bertrand, Supervisor.
Do you want me to answer that question now?
It's probably in your report, right?
Yeah. The water plant has pumped 205 million gallons of clean, safe drinking water this quarter. We completed our lab audit with the DEQ and received certification for another three years. And then we also removed all the old ozone equipment and prepared the building for the new equipment that will be arriving within the next week or so. Testing is complete on it, and once it's here, we're going to work as hard as we can to get it up and running as fast and as soon as possible. We also conducted our lead and copper testing throughout the city and reported all of our results to all the residents that participated. And I'd like to thank all those residents for participating.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Let's see, Patrick here. I'm going to give the Public Services Department report for Jeff Wood. The Public Services Department in the last quarter has winterized the irrigation systems, the downtown fountain, the city buildings, and boat docks, started preparations and planning for the rehabilitation of Dickinson Street for spring 2020 construction, submitted the Title VI report to the Michigan Department of Transportation, certifying compliance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964. They have completed the street striping program for this year and replaced traffic signs as needed due to damage or poor reflectability. They've trimmed 117 city trees and removed 27 trees as requested and deemed necessary by city staff. The motor pool has begun maintenance on snow removal and salting vehicles and equipment in preparation for this winter. The Parking Division issued 1,479 parking citations for the quarter, which is up 263 tickets written from this time last year. The city generated approximately $86,788 in meter revenue and $33,679 in park mobile revenue, for a total of $120,467. They have responded to 80 animal control complaints and supplied services to 11,116 persons utilizing the dialerite system. City Clerk's Office, the City Clerk's Office has been preparing for the upcoming November 5th city election. We received and reviewed seven candidate petitions for the July, by the July 23rd deadline. We recently increased our permanent absentee ballot list by nearly 1,000 additional voters after reaching out to our voters with a mailing this summer. Voters may ask to be replaced on the permanent absentee voting list at any time by contacting our office. We mailed over 1,800 absentee, or absent voter ballot applications in August, and the initial batch of over 1,400 absentee ballots were processed and mailed earlier this month to voters who requested them. We also mailed notices to all the voters in Precinct 5 of their precinct moving for this election. The City Clerk's Office will be open on Saturday, November 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m. to accept absentee ballots and assist with requests. We have processed over 500 business registrations for the 2019-2020 year. In addition, the department processed numerous vending and waste hauler permits and have responded to nearly 40 four-year requests so far this year. City Clerk's Office has been working on the Mount Clemens Tinsel Tour in which we invite local groups, families, and businesses to sponsor and decorate a Christmas tree for a brilliant holiday display. This year, we are moving the festivities to the City Hall side of the river for greater accessibility. Join us on Tuesday, December 3rd, for the official kickoff of the Tinsel Tour and free family fun. The Clerk's Office has begun working on an initiative in preparation for the 2020 census. We represent the city as part of a committee collaborating with neighboring communities, Clinton Township, Roseville, and Fraser. By promoting the census together, we are hoping to be able to spread the word to encourage as much participation as possible so that all of our residents will be counted. Getting an accurate count of every resident in the community will lead to greater federal monies being distributed to Mount Clemens. We continue to accept applications for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. These positions are an excellent way to give back to the community. Vacancies remain on the following boards: Board of Zoning Appeals, Beautification Committee, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Historical Commission, Historic District Commission, Local Officers Compensation Commission, and the Traffic Safety Committee. And that's all I have. Do you have a question?
One question. If someone doesn't get their absentee ballot back in, they can just go to their polls and vote?
If they receive a ballot and didn't get it back, they can go to the poll on Election Day, yes.
Okay, and people can still register to vote?
They can, mhm. As of today, or today was the last day for mail-in registration to register to vote. As of tomorrow and through Election Day, anybody can still register to vote, but they have to come in person to the City Clerk's Office, and they have to bring proper identification, something that shows their residential address and their ID.
It has to be a picture ID, correct?
A picture ID, yes. That's all I have.
Do we have a Fire Department report?
Not today.
I'm sorry, one more question. What was the date again for the Tinsel Tour kickoff?
December 3rd. It's a Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda. Please note that Agenda Item 9A has been removed from the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay.
Krap.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
And now is the time for public participation. We have a three-minute time limit. Please give your name and address.
Mayor Protem Campbell, City Commissioners George Cale, 180 Grand Ave. This is, again, please understand in memory of Commissioner Ford, in honor of his memory, who I've met only too briefly over the years, and have spoken to him enough more recently. Also, please keep in mind that I bear no animosity towards any one of you. However, I have some serious issues regarding the way and the circumstances surrounding the medical marijuana ordinance that was adopted by this body at the end of December of last year. Lisa, as you may recall, I had handed you this back in April, when I first appeared before this body on April 15th, drawing concerns to a general business item that appeared on the agenda on April 1st, and that was the subject rezoning of 142 Northbound Grashit, which enabled that applicant to qualify for finding themselves within the green zone so they could submit an application to be permitted for a provisioning center. The Planning Commission had sent you a resolution to deny that request, and obviously, somebody had amended that agenda and decided to, of course, overrule the Planning Commission and circumvent any of the procedural issues that could have been resolved either through the Zoning Board of Appeals or, of course, the Circuit Court. On May 6th, when I came back, I had two questions. I wanted to know who within the city administration made that decision to overturn the Planning Commission? It just didn't appear randomly. It was either, was it Commissioner Fournier? Was it Commissioner Krap? Was it the mayor? Was it Lisa? Somebody had to say, you know what, we're going to throw aside the Planning Commission. We're going to rezone this damn parcel, and those gentlemen will be welcomed in this community. The question never was answered. One of my teammates had reviewed the May 20th meeting. That request went denied, so I'm here a second time to request who within the administration had done it. I was hoping if the mayor was here, she would understand that I'm not going to be found guilty of a sin of silence. I would have asked her if it was her to have the decency of at least resigning from office, because she's put us into a horrible mess, as the city now is in a lawsuit, and of course, there's a restraining order against the city injunctioning them from further activities as it surrounds medical marijuana facilities, permits, or any activity. I don't know who knows what or why, but I'm sure all of you are aware of that. And Commissioner Mensah, I do owe you an apology because at that April 15th meeting, not so much an accusation, but I had said, what did Commissioner Mensah know and when? Because you knew that there were seven provisioning center applications that day on the first. I should have directed it to Mayor Dempsey. What did the mayor know and when did she know it? I look forward to those answers, and I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Next up.
My name is Gina, 81 North Highland. I have a simple request. With Halloween coming up Thursday, I was hoping that the lights at the Memorial Field, the baseball field lights, it's quite dark there when they're not on, and especially on Halloween. We see a lot of people crossing the field, a lot of mischief, just things we don't want going on. I think it would be a great gesture if we were just to leave those lights on for maybe just the night before and Halloween. Safety thing.
Okay.
Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street. I just wanted to remind everybody, if you don't know, this Friday is our final battling Bather's home football game. It is also Senior Night. It is a great opportunity to get out and meet the kids of our community and those who will be voting in next year's election, in the year after's election, the seniors of your community. Kids are currently four and four. If they win this Friday, they are on the bubble to get their first playoff berth since 1994. So I would, it would be wonderful if we could see some of your wonderful smiling faces. We're going to cross our fingers and hope that the weather holds out, and just come out and support the kids. Thanks.
Any more? Okay, seeing none.
Good evening. Dolores Gustinak, 250 Euclid. With all this talk about our water, how it tastes, you hear it, you see on Facebook, you hear it through your neighbors. I went to Home Depot a few weeks ago, about 10 days ago, and it gave out free kits. I brought a bunch here tonight. All you, it doesn't cost you anything. All you do is fill up your water from your water faucet, mail it to them, you don't need a stamp, and they will personally call you. Home Depot called me out two days ago and said there was nothing wrong with our water, and they do put chemicals in it to treat the water, which is common, and everyone has a different taste. As you, most of you know, I had cancer, I had 42 chemo treatments, and to me, everything tastes like metal. So if you ask me how the water tastes, I'd say it's terrible. It's metal, but it's from the chemo. So everyone has a different taste, but there is nothing wrong with our water. It's very safe to drink. So I'll leave these kits here. If anybody wants them, pick them up, put a drop of water in there, and mail it out with the envelope, and everything is in here.
Thank you, Dolores.
Anyone else? Okay. There are no administrative responses, so motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the workshop and the regular session on October 7th, 2019.
Roll call.
Somebody needs a second.
Mensah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krap.
Yes.
Okay, General Business 9B, request approval for a revolution, resolution to support House Bill 4691.
Resolution to approve, to approve the resolution supporting House Bill 4691 for establishment of stormwater utilities and submit the same to the Governor of the State of Michigan and the House Regulatory Reform Committee. Second.
The House Representatives have proposed House Bill 4691, which authorizes the establishment of stormwater utilities. Funding infrastructure, especially underground infrastructure, has been one of the largest challenges that local governments face. This legislation will be critical in aligning funding and improving the local government's ability to replace aging infrastructure, implement stormwater treatment systems, and reduce localized flooding during major rain events.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. There was just, I want to make sure I'm understanding the language completely, and we are not authorizing or supporting in any way additional utility amounts for residents under this.
Absolutely not.
Even though they say that it could be a stormwater utility.
Is the issue that this does not fall under enterprise funds?
The issue with this is that, right currently, when there's a funding source to do, to maybe do a road, there is not, you can't use another funding source at the same time that would do the infrastructure underneath it. So we're supporting that we want the state to be able to say it's okay to combine funding sources to
So we could take enterprise funds.
Do your underneath at the time that you do the road itself.
Okay, but there's no additional taxes or additional utilities that would go to the residents?
There is not.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krap.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Agenda Item 9C, approved purchases and payment of invoices. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Any questions? Roll call.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krap.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes. Motion for consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Krap.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
City Managers' Report.
The following events will be held for Halloween in Mount Clemens. Coming up Saturday, October 26th, the farmer's market, pumpkin party, and pork roast will be from 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. on North River Road. For more information, please contact (586) 469-7600. The Halloween Spooktacular, sponsored by the Downtown Development Authority, will take place from noon until 3:00 p.m. on McComb Place at the Fountain Stage. For more information, please call (586) 469-4168. The Mount Clemens Optimist Club will host a trunk or treat at the McComb County Parking Structure on Main Street from noon until 3:00 p.m. For more information, please call (586) 463-4430. The American Cancer Society will hold its annual Making Strides Against Breast Cancer McComb County Event within Mount Clemens on Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. The event will kick off at the City Hall Parking Lot and gazebo with a walk taking place on sidewalks. No road closures are being requested. A meet the candidate night for all candidates running for the City Commission will be held on Thursday, October 24th, at the Mount Clemens Public Library, beginning at 6:30 p.m. This event will be hosted by the Mount Clemens Cable Commission. The city election will be held on Tuesday, November 5th. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. The City Clerk's Office will be open on Saturday, November 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. for processing absentee ballot requests. For questions regarding the election or to find out where your voting precinct is located, please contact the City Clerk's Office at (586) 469-6818, extension 3. Please note that voting at Precinct 5, located at Karnes Jermaine Jackson Community Center, has been relocated to vote at City Hall for this election. The Mount Clemens Tinsel Tour is backed by popular demand. The city will be holding its second annual Tinsel Tour throughout the month of December. Trees will be lit up on Tuesday, December 3rd, and will remain lit until New Year's Day. Anyone interested in participating by sponsoring or decorating a Christmas tree can contact the City Manager's Office at (586) 469-6818, extension 315, to reserve their tree. The cost to sponsor a tree is $75, and includes the cost of the tree, signage, white lights, city fees, and proper environmental disposal of the trees. I do want to remind everybody that the Railroad Crossing Repair Project started today, and it should be completed by this Friday. So a portion of CAS between Grashit and Grossbeck is closed. We're asking you to seek maybe Church Street as an alternate route. And I also want to encourage everyone to vote for your favorite skeleton. Votes are taken until October 28th, and you can get a ballot at the display location of wherever your favorite skeleton may be. That's all I have.
Commissioner Comments? Commissioner Mensah.
The Mount Clemens Optimist Club looks forward to some more people signing up for trunks. We could use a few, a few more. We would be really happy. The sponsorship fee to sponsor a truck is only $25. You do have to have a lot of candy, but we have a candy store right here in town, and so you can get that pretty handily. Trunk or treat is Trunk or treat is, interim city manager Borgazi said, is this week's Saturday from noon to 3:00. So if you need a form, you can contact me, you can contact Steve Saft, you can go on the Optimist Club's Facebook page, and we'll get your message. As Mr. Barnes said earlier, this is the last game for our battling bathers this week, Friday. A couple of weeks ago, we had put out calls, and we had talked about it at commission, and we had talked about it at a meeting in the community, and we had put out calls for people to come support these guys on the 11th for their homecoming game. I want to tell you how proud I was of our community. We filled the stands, based on all of the, all of the requests, all of the asks, all of the Facebook posts, to get people to come to these games. We filled that stand, and I was so proud of everybody that showed up. It really let these guys know that their community stands behind them, and that's really important. So those of you that can, please, go to the game this Friday, their last one. Make a really bad sign like I did with horrible lettering, and just tell them that you love them, okay? I want to point out to you today that one of the public speakers was Gina New. Gina New is the coordinator of Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and we did our sixth home this past Sunday, yesterday. I'm, I'm still recovering. This one was a lot of work. So I just wanted to give her the acknowledgement and the props for, for doing that, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Fournier?
Thank you. I want to encourage everyone to get out and vote on the 5th. The only items on the ballot are our local elections, and they're very important, right? We, this, this is something that we can really influence here, so I encourage everyone to get out and vote. You can still register, and you can still get an absentee ballot, so let's get it done. Good luck to the bathers. We wish them the best, and we're all rooting for you. As far as a skeleton, you've got to check the one out in front of the fire department. It's really good. I do want to address, there's a lot that I can't address right now, or just don't have enough detail about this lawsuit that was mentioned, but I do want to say that the commission did nothing irregular or wrong when it overturned the decision by the Planning Commission for that rezoning of that piece of property. Everything, whether the Planning Commission approves it or doesn't approve it, comes to the commission to be looked at. That's how it all works. That's what we said at that meeting as well. And so nothing was done improper, or someone wasn't putting somebody up, or nobody got paid off. It was how it works. And that, in, in this instance, the commission decided not to go with the Planning Commission's recommendation, and it was a recommendation. And with that, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraut?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the department heads for all of their reports. I know that it's an added responsibility on your plate, and so thank you for doing that. I wanted to mention that we voted on appointments to the board. They, they come from the mayor's recommendations. We, we talked about the Traffic Safety Commission and Beautification, right? Yeah, and Beautification. Both of the people that we appointed to those boards are from the Seminole Hills neighborhood. Over 60% of the people that are on mayoral-appointed boards are from that neighborhood and not from several other neighborhoods, and so I just wanted to point that out. We, as a commission, don't get to see anyone else who, who applies for it, so I don't know if, I don't know why, but I just wanted to encourage everyone from every neighborhood to apply for these boards. And as interim city manager Lisa Borges pointed out, there are openings on Zoning Board of Appeals, Beautification, Brownfield Development, Historical Committee, Commission, Historical District Commission, Local Officers Commission. There are always board openings open, and we need your help, and we need you to be at the table to make decisions. And so I invite you all to come out and fill out an application. It's a very, very easy application, and you can find it online, and so it's, and if you have any questions, the City Clerk's Office is always there to answer any of your questions or email any of us city commissioners. We'd be glad to help. I, too, attended the football homecoming night, and it was fantastic. It was a great night of what, what a community football game should look like. And it was fun, and we had food beforehand, and lots of, lots of good times, and I was proud to be there. After the meeting tonight, I will have, from our local SEMCOG, I have bike lights so that you're not walking or running or riding your bike in the dark without lights. So if you need some bike lights, see me after the meeting, because I have those. I'd like to wish everyone, oh, wait, one more thing before I get to that. We, I was very surprised to see that before this meeting, we weren't having a work session, and I just feel like there's so many things to discuss right now. And I know we're about to go through, you know, this big transition, but I also think that we can't stop moving things forward, and I was surprised that we didn't continue a discussion about media mode. I was surprised that we haven't, we weren't discussing the city manager search or moving forward that, with that possibility of firing, of hiring a fire chief. We just have so many issues on our plate right now that, you know, I think we need to further discuss, so I was really surprised by that. I would like to wish everybody a safe and happy Halloween. We have so many neighborhoods in our, in our area that have great displays, especially the one on Harrington, the Callis Manor, I've heard, is pretty spooky. And then I, on Maras, between CAS and, and Church. And so if you are at all skittish, don't take your child down that one. They're, they're really fun, but something to see. So the people put a lot of work into them, so go check them out. And with that, that's all I have. Thanks.
I would just like to say that I've had several residents. Want to give a special thank you to the street department for having the street sweepers come down and clean the streets, so a thank you to the street department. And with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Almost. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.